We'll call the Wilmer City Council Meeting for Monday, October 3rd to order roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Plowman has an excused absence. Please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, on your God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. We have two items that are on the table. Is there any interest in removing the consideration of an ordinance rezoning Lakeland Avenue, unique properties from Ag to R5?
I'll make a motion to remove that from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to remove the consideration of an ordinance rezoning Lakeland Avenue, unique properties from Ag to R5. Ms. Valiant.
Good afternoon, council. As you know, two weeks ago, this came in front of the council to rezone the unique properties from agricultural to R5 on the Lakeland Avenue site. Is there any questions that I could talk to at this point about it? This is for a multi-housing unit of 216 total units. It'll start in phases 1, 2, and 3 of 72-unit apartments for each building.
Okay, council had received public testimony. The mayor had closed the public hearing, brought it before the council. There was a short discussion, and then there was a motion to table. Some of the issues that were on the table or that were being discussed at the time that it was tabled was the traffic study. Do you have an update on the traffic study?
The traffic study will not be done until late November, first part of November. But with that, you can make that a contingent in the conditional, as part of either the conditional use permit or the TIF agreement.
Okay. In my recollection of the conversation that took place in regards to the traffic study was that the traffic study, the developer was agreeable to the findings of the traffic study. If he was unagreeable to some of the items that came out of that traffic study, it would be his choice to pull the project or move the project forward.
Correct.
And does that stand true today?
That is still true today.
Okay. And then there was a comment that was made that there were two nursing homes in the area, and I had questioned that. Have we been able to find out? I believe they're assisted livings, not...
They're assisted livings, not nursing homes, as that qualification applies.
Okay. And then were we able to find out anything about the church?
That I have not found anything out. I believe the church property is along Civic Drive, though, to the...
Civic Center Drive?
Yes.
Mr. Fenster, could you confer with a city administrator and give us some direction as to what's happening with that church? Ms. Valiant, can you speak with him about that?
Yeah.
Well, I worked with that church before, but I don't know the layout.
I don't think they've got any plans.
So the land has not been sold to our knowledge?
They do, they own the property. They own the property, but there are no plans that our planning department has received.
Okay. And then, that's all I can remember that was being discussed at the time it was tabled. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Valiant?
I have a question. As far as the traffic study is concerned, when did the traffic study issue first come out? When did they know they had to have a traffic study?
It was discussed at the planning commission, and the planning commission put it as part of the conditional use permit.
That was in August?
That was in first part of September.
September? Sure.
Yep.
Was that the meeting that was held at the fire station?
Yes.
So when, so at that time, why didn't we start this traffic study then? Why are we waiting?
It's not us, it's not for us to start that. That's the developer to start that, and he has, he did start that process.
When?
It's in the works right now.
Okay.
He had to contact an engineering firm to do that. So it's, and they also put on there that they didn't, actually, it was in August, because they said they didn't want the traffic study done when there was no school in session. So the traffic study was coming up, and they were going to start it, I don't know what date, Samuel, they're starting it today, which is not unusual. It's only four weeks from, five weeks from the last. Engineers can't start everything and drop everything.
Okay. So the traffic study takes how long?
They take about two good weeks to get information, and then they take another good two weeks to fit it into their schedule, because they're not dropping all their other work either, and to compile that data and get you a nice, if you recall the traffic study that was done on County Road 5 for you, for the FedEx, it takes, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that traffic study took almost six weeks to get that traffic study back.
Okay. So the traffic study is not specifically going to be finished until late November? Or when?
Approximately, I'd say that's probably a good starting point, mid-November.
At least, beginning of November.
Okay.
Optimistically.
So if they do find, as it was stated, if they find something that's not something that they can change, or they don't like, they can pull out?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if it costs, go ahead.
Councilmember O'Brien, I just want to point out that I was, I was reciting what I had remembered from the last meeting.
Right.
I'm not stating that as fact. I'm just stating that that's the things that we had talked about as a council that we wanted to address.
Exactly.
I'm not, I'm not taking one position or another.
Exactly. I understand that. Okay. All right.
And, you know, the, the cost could be prohibitive to the builder to continue with the development if the traffic study needs to have a lot of changes to it.
I've asked a number of times where, or who is doing the traffic study?
Go ahead, Sam.
SEH Consulting of Minneapolis.
Okay.
CH?
Yes, SEH. They do a lot of research.
Yes.
Okay. And then they, or the builder, will be paying for the traffic study?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
SRF, is it? SRF. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Yeah.
City Attorney Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, just for purposes of informing your discussion on the traffic study, since the last meeting, and I know this is technically for the next agenda item, but since the last meeting, we have negotiated language that would go right into the TIF agreement in the event the council were to approve TIF for this project. And I do believe that's a critical piece of this project. In the TIF agreement itself, we have negotiated language that identifies the traffic study as a requirement to be completed before any increment could ever be reimbursed to the developer. We have identified the consultant that is to the satisfaction of the city and its engineer that will perform that study, the minimum criteria for that study, and a commitment from the developer to follow the recommendations of that study in the event any upgrades, roadway improvements are identified as necessary to accommodate the future traffic expected to be generated from this project.
And SRF is a company that has been widely used for traffic studies. They also have done the study on Highway 12 for Men dot 2. So SRF, that's their forte.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus, follow me, Nelson.
I thought I recalled some discussion that there was a one- or two-day study that was done, but then we were requesting a more comprehensive one because the one-day one didn't give a full picture.
No, there was no, it was said that they could do a one-day study, and that was at the time of, and that was in August before school became in session, and the planning commission said, no, they didn't want that. They wanted a study that was more comprehensive with the schools, kids in school.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. We did not receive the planning commission minutes from the first meeting in September. I know they were referenced in the second meeting in September, but I am just wanting to clarify, what steps did the planning commission approve, and what steps are still left to go before the planning commission? And then, the contingency is on the conditional use permit. Would you please share with us why there needs to be a conditional use permit and how that came about?
First, the conditional use permit is necessary because it's 216 units, which is over the allowed in that zone. The city does not allow that number of commercial units in the, in that R5. The R5, I believe, doesn't even allow 72 units, so I believe it allows something like 56 or so. So it still would need a conditional use permit because of the number of units. And the planning commission did approve that the zoning, they did approve the zoning to be changed, and then that same night, they also approved that the, under the conditional use permit, is when they would put the traffic study. So that's, so in order to get the conditional use permit, the traffic study is going to have to be done. And so that's where it's at right now. The planning commission has done everything up to this point that you're sitting on right now. They, and they don't approve TIF, so that's why the TIF is in front of the council, and the conditional use permit will come then at a later date from the planning commission, when they get their resolves.
I believe that last meeting also, there was a comment made that about approving the rezoning for this project only, that if something fell apart with this project, that it didn't go through, that it wouldn't have to stay at R5. Am I the only one that...
Well, that was said.
Okay.
Yes. And that reason for that is so that for Warren Erickson, you don't change the zoning on him to change his taxes. So the zoning would not go in, in fact, until everything is in place.
So if we do that, that is something that should be part of the motion, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because he's in Ag deferred now, and if moved it, then the taxes, Ag deferred would be due, and then also the added taxes would be due as well, is what was said to last meeting.
Correct. It changes tax base.
Just no comments or questions? Okay?
I've got one more question. The conditional use, right now, we're talking about 216 units, correct? In conditional use, you're talking 56 units?
Our minimum, we have, we have, I should say, we have a maximum in that zone. So as far as the zone R5, you have a max, and so anybody over that max always has to ask for a conditional use permit, whatever, whoever the developer is.
Did we do the same thing on Highway 5?
You did.
I would entertain a motion. If the council, if anyone in the council is so willing to do so?
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance for rezoning the property located at 1400 Lakeland Drive Northeast from Agriculture District to High Density Multi-Family Residential District, assign it a number, and publish.
Second.
It's been a motion that has been made and seconded. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nelson.
That does not include the conversation that we just had about, that it only applies to this project.
After it's approved, fully vetted, or no? Right, what you want on the, is the additional recommendation that the zoning would not take place until the project completely is approved.
I believe what I, and I'm going to say what I think I heard, but I'm not sure this is what I heard, what the council would like considered is, is that if the project did not go to unique properties, that it remain in Ag and not be re-zoned to R5. I believe that was stated, but it was not stated in the motion. Counsel, Attorney Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, I agree that was not stated in the motion. In the event the council wanted to make the rezoning contingent on this project, my recommendation would be to amend the motion, either by friendly amendment or otherwise, to make the rezoning contingent on commencement of construction on or before July 1st, 2023. And the reason I offer that date is that's what's already been negotiated in the TIF agreement. That's the date on which the developer has committed to begin the project.
I will make that amendment.
Second.
So that would be a friendly amendment unless the council wishes to vote on that separately. Legal staff has said that we could do that as a friendly amendment. Would you like to vote on that separately, or is it okay to have it in the main motion? Okay, we'll leave it in the main motion from the nodding heads. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, I'm sorry, what was the date that you said is in the agreement?
July 23.
What was it?
Excuse me. The date I offered was that the rezoning be contingent on the developer commencing construction, so beginning work, on or before July 1st, 2023.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
No.
O'Brien.
No.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
That ordinance passes. Next, we have to consider the unique properties, TIF agreement, Lakeland Apartment Complex. Is there someone who wishes to take that off the table? Someone.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to remove from the table. Discussion on removing it from the table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have consideration of unique properties, TIF agreement, Lakeland Apartment Complex. It's a resolution approving and establishing a TIF district, Lakeland Drive Apartments Project. And, Ms. Valiant, anything that you would like to add?
No, but I do have Tom here. Tom Denaway is here from Baker Tilly to give you more information about the funding of the TIF, if you would like that information again. As you heard, Mr. Scott also updated you as to what is in the TIF agreement as far as the updated version that was just actually completed this morning. Is there any questions maybe I could field for you?
I believe we can bring it to the council table. Counsel, you did hear the TIF, we did go through the BUT 4 at the last meeting. You heard all of those reports. That public hearing was opened. Public had the opportunity to comment, and that public hearing was closed as well, and then that motion was to table. It has since been taken off the table. Counsel, what are your wishes? Make a motion to establish the TIF district. So a resolution has been introduced approving and establishing the TIF district for the Lakeland Drive Apartment Project. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving, approving and establishing the TIF district for the Lakeland Drive Apartments. Councilmember O'Brien, is this the time that you would like added to the, to the document? What Mr. Scott has already stated is in the document stating that the traffic study would have to be done.
Yes.
Okay. And the maker and the second are in agreement to that being added?
Sure.
It's fine. Additional discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Just seeking clarification on the difference of the amounts, and then if we could just review what changes from last time to this time that Mr. Scott...
You'd like to have Tom field those questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, Tom Denaway with Baker Tilly, many of your advisors. The pay-as-you-go development agreement was initially structured as one single note that would have been reflective of all three phases of the development for a total principal amount of the assistance of approximately $8.7 million. At the request of the developer to ease the financing of the project and the fact that each of the individual buildings, I believe, will have individual loans associated with them, it is easier for them to secure financing if each of those buildings has their own separate pay-as-you-go note and pay-as-you-go note as part of the project. That way, the amount of assistance that each building or each phase of the project would receive is specifically identified within that note, and it's easier for those to be assigned to a bank or be counted by the bank as collateral for the project. So the only change that was done to the development agreement was to, instead of referencing one single development agreement or one single pay-as-you-go note at 8.7 million, it was broken out into three individual notes that in total equaled that same amount, but they were broken out on a prorata basis. The first note is a little bit more at 3.1 million because that building will be completed first, and it'll have the full duration of the TIF district for that prorata share of the TIF revenue to be captured. The second building would come on at a later date and would therefore have a shorter term, which is why the, that value for that note is slightly less. And then similarly, the third note has an even lesser amount because that building would be coming on, again, at a later date, but that, it's the same duration of TIF, so that'll have a slightly lesser period again for the amount of TIF collection appropriate to that building. So it's essentially taking out what was originally defined as in one pay-as-you-go note and breaking it into three on a prorata basis for each of the buildings. Overall, assistance amount has not changed.
Just no comments or questions? Motion is on the table to approve a resolution in establishing the TIF district Lakeland Drive Apartments with an addendum that states that the traffic study must be completed. Ready to vote? Roll call.
I have a question first. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Brien.
What is our maximum TIF allowance that we have for this, for our city? You know where we're at there on our maximum?
I don't have that added up.
I'm not following. What are you asking?
Isn't there a maximum that we can have as TIF in this community, in the city?
By statute, I am not aware of there being any cap on the amount of tax capacity that a city can have within TIF districts on a cumulative basis overall, over across the city. There is a max as it relates to the use of tax abatement, but that does not apply to the creation or use of tax increment districts within, within the city. So there's not a, there's not a cap or a maximum amount that could be within TIF districts that I'm aware of within statute. I'd maybe defer Attorney Scott for confirmation, but I have not seen that.
Mr. Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, that's my understanding as well. I would have answered exactly the same.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Well, I kind of have two questions. I thought that it was brought up that he has 600 to 700 people on a waiting list. Have we seen that list at all?
He stated that he has, that he has a waiting list. I would, I would, I would refer to the city attorney, but I believe that's privileged confidential information. But I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not aware, Mayor, members of the council, that the city has requested that list be provided, or even if it could be, if we had requested it, but I remember that representation as well.
Thank you. I don't know even if we got the list. How are we going to verify the names?
Well, it's coming up to the second part.
Because they could be from out of town. They're not necessarily going to be from in town.
And my follow-up to that was, I was asked if this was legal to switch this over to TIF if he already has enough people who are going to rent the apartments?
Yes.
If he really needed a TIF and it was legal.
The BUT 4 is for funding of the project and the, and the dollars and the infrastructure that goes into that project.
So is it legal to switch this over to the TIF district?
Yes. It's not switched at all. It's, you're moving into a TIF district.
If he already has all the, could have all apartments filled up?
But that doesn't mean that he'll have them at that time. I mean, this is not going to be built for two years, completion. It's going to start next year and be completed the following year, but yes, it is because what you're doing is you're following the BUT 4 is the cost of construction, not if he has enough renters to fill it.
There was some confusion about exactly what TIF is, and I just, I talked with our attorney, and I know he's forwarded some things out to the council, but I'd like you to, just to kind of tell us exactly what TIF, what TIF is, the way that you and I described it before.
Mayor, members of the council, tax increment is when the city, as in this case, if you were to approve the, well, you have approved the TIF district, you would, during the period defined, which is from 2026 on, capture the increment, capture the taxes, basically, the increment being the taxes generated by the property gaining value as a result of this project you're facilitating by granting TIF. So you capture the taxes generated to all jurisdictions, and then those become available for reimbursement to the developer upon proof that the developer has incurred qualifying expenses. In this case, qualifying expenses would be probably site prep, construction of the actual housing units, other related infrastructure upgrades accompanying the project. So the city will capture the tax revenue generated by the increase in value and reimburse the developer. The city will also reimburse itself 5% of the increment generated for the city's own administrative expenses related to this project. The question that we had discussed was a little different, which is for a housing TIF, what income restrictions apply to the occupants of the TIF building. So there's several different kinds of TIF districts. This one is qualifying for TIF because it is a housing complex. It will provide housing opportunities to citizens of the city. Along with that, by statute, come regulations on the income levels of the occupants of the building. And the applicable requirements that apply are actually found in the Internal Revenue Code. They're incorporated by reference into the statute, and there are two metrics that would qualify a project like this for receipt of TIF. It would be either making sure that for the life of the TIF district, 20% of the units in the building, in all three buildings, would be occupied by individuals at an income level at or below 50% of the area median income, or 40% of the units being occupied by individuals at or below 60% of the area median income. So there's two different tests that could apply. You have to, the developer would have to satisfy one of those. You have to the developer would have to satisfy one of those. It's not a regulation on how much rent can be charged. It's a set of income eligibility restrictions that apply on a project-wide basis.
So there's no so somebody is on a low-income basis, they don't get a reduction in rate of the rent? In other words, it's still the the normal price of the apartment, correct?
The regulations do not directly apply to regulate how much rent can be charged. They apply to as a project-wide basis for all the units that are created and assisted with TIF, making sure that a certain percentage of them are individuals that qualify under one of those two tests as low-income residents.
What checks and balances do we have that these are being met? How do we tell that? I'm not saying they're not doing. I'm just asking what checks and balances are there so we know that that's being withheld?
In the future, once assuming again the council were to approve this TIF agreement, and I would welcome any additional thoughts if I don't get it all right, but once the TIF is in effect and the increments are being generated, there is, I believe, reporting requirements to the state auditor's office that should address all of the aspects of compliance, and I would assume that would include the composition of the occupants in the in the buildings. But I don't actually do the reporting, so I don't know a whole lot about it beyond that.
I'll defer that to Tom, too.
Yes, the on behalf of the city, we do complete the annual Office of the State Auditor reports that there's a report that's specific to each TIF district that is active within each community in the state. That report documents the activity of each TIF district for each year. It does not actually verify or require verification of the income qualification of the units. That would be done privately between the city and the developer per the terms of the development agreement, which I believe requires the developer to maintain and provide documentation at the city's request of that income verification if the city were to request it. That information is not submitted as part of the Office of the State Auditor report. It's not required as part of that. That report is reporting the financial activity of the district, but the city via their terms of their development agreement could request documentation, I believe, probably at any point from the developer, providing that income verification for each of those units for each of their active TIF districts. The it's probably worth noting that the OSA TIF reports are completed on a annual basis, and it's on the basis of the prior year's activity. So they're due to the State Auditor's Office on August 1st of each year. So we completed by and submitted by August 1st of 2022 the annual activity for the TIF district TIF districts as of 2021 calendar year. So as of now, all the reports that have been completed for the existing unique properties development TIF district, that district as of the completion of 2021 had not yet generated any tax increment revenue, and no dollars had been paid to that development due to the delay in the process of property taxes in Minnesota, where there's a two-year delay between when construction occurs, the properties then assessed the following year, and then taxes are payable the year after that. So as part of our completion of the Office of the State Auditor reports, there would not have been anything to verify it in relation to that TIF district because as of 2021, which was just reported this past summer, there wouldn't have been any pay-as-you-go payments made to that project.
I did some research. Unique opportunities has quite a few places that have TIF. And I'm just wondering, do we as a city, do we check the others before we get into something like this? Do we look and see that they've been following what they said they're going to do?
As as Mr. Denaway told you that it takes almost two years before there's anything. So but for this year, for 2022, Justice does have, I confirmed with Mr. Herzog, that Justice does have the reporting of the number of units that are eligible for under the those income guidelines. So for the 2022, and that payment then would follow next year after all the TIF is captured this year, then those payments would be paid to after the those reportings are given to the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things that Wilmer does as well as part of the annual payment of pay-as-you-go payments for TIF districts is requiring the developer to contact the city and request and invoice the city for that payment each year. So as part of that process, at the time that that invoice is received and before staff pays that invoice, they can also at that time request that documentation to be completed and reviewed and verified that that TIF payment is eligible by virtue of the developer having to provide the city that invoice in anticipation of requesting that that TIF assistance.
Also, I've also spoken to Mr. Herzog, and he would be more than happy to give the list of his waiting list to our city attorney for review if the council so chooses.
Councilmember Butterfield?
A follow-up with O'Brien's on the TIF district. How much money right now does Wilmer have out total right now in TIF districts going out right as of today?
As of the last report, do you have that with you, Tom? I can you just you just approved the audit findings loud. The 2021 audit was last at the last council meeting, and that information is on that last council meeting. I think there's five outstanding TIF districts.
Yep.
One is ending this year at least, if I remember right. This morning I was looking at it.
Sorry, I don't have that information available to me off the top of my head. I would need to do some research. There is an annual disclosure statement that is published as part of the completion of the TIF reports each year, and that has a breakout for the activity of each of the districts that talks about the amount of tax increment that was generated that year, the amount of tax capacity that was captured, and then the amount of revenues received each year for each district, and then the amount that was expensed or paid by that TIF district or each of the TIF districts that year. And that's published, it has to be published one time by the city prior to August 15th. I would have to go back to my full computer and pull up that information and get the exact amount.
The other question I would have is, why do some businesses, some that are getting into a new business such as, I mean, Herzog's have got a lot, I mean, they've got unique opportunities, have a lot of apartments around the state, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes. So other companies that are starting, why do they elect not to go with TIF?
I you know, I can't speak for the motives of all developers as to why they may or may not pursue the use of tax increment financing, but I can tell you that the contingency that is required that allows for the creation of a tax increment financing district is the income restriction of those units and that they have to document and provide that 20% of those units are, or in this case, that 20% of the units are occupied by people at 50% of the greater area median income, and they have to maintain that for the entire lifetime of the TIF district. That may or may not, depending on market dynamics, impact the developer's potential cash flow and potential revenue capacity of those districts because because obvious of those apartments, because obviously, if the occupant is income limited, you know, one would one would assume that that would roll over their revenue paying capacity and their rental capacity that they would be able to incorporate or absorb as an individual. But again, that would be speaking to the individual behavior of the tenants, and I can't can't speak to that exactly, but I can say conclusively that for creation of a housing TIF district, you have to have income restricted units. And I assume if developers are, you can make the presumption that if developers are not pursuing housing TIF districts, it's because they don't want to meet that obligation.
But that's an assumption.
That would be an assumption, correct.
Is it is it normal for a, well, this is 400-plus units we're talking about, only with five and up here, correct?
Oh, sorry, what was that?
This will be over 400-plus units we're talking about now in these two?
Between the two units? I had to, to be honest, I do not know the size of the first.
Okay, we need to keep the conversation to the project and to the item that's on the agenda.
Right.
Not bringing all other types of TIF that the city has. Let's keep it to the question to the TIF district that we are attempting to establish. The council either votes affirmative for it or they vote against it. I want to keep it not to all the projects that Mr. Herzog owns across the state of Minnesota or in Wilmer. Please keep it to to remain to the question.
Yeah, the only question I was having is 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 it is it normal for a size of Wilmer, for example, to have this many apartments in that we're looking at in the community?
Who are you asking the question to? Who are you asking the question to? It's a council decision.
Yep. So all I'm asking is, is is it normal to have this many apartments in a community this size?
Ms. Valiant or Mr. Backman is here with the EDC. I don't think either of you are prepared to answer the question, but you want to try to answer the question, or Mr. Scott? I mean, it's a council decision how many apartments you have in town.
It is. If you all remember, and I don't know if you do or not, that in 2015, there was a housing study that was completed, and at that time, it I don't recall what it was for the city of Wilmer, but I do know for the city of Spicer, it was over 200 units just for the city of Spicer, which is only 1,200 people. So maybe Aaron does have that number off the top of his head because he he runs in the realm all the day.
Good evening, Aaron Backman, Executive Director of the EDC. There was, at least for the city of Wilmer, the study done in 2015 indicated that we needed over 300 units, and obviously, market conditions have changed over the last seven years. The economy is not static. We've had growth. We continue to have growth. You know, one interesting stat, I'll just throw it out there hopefully, is that this community for 14 censuses in a row has had growth. Many cities can't say that over 140 years. We continue to have new people move here. We continue to create jobs. We continue to need more housing, whether it's rental or owner-occupied.
Mr. Finstra, I'm going to put you on the spot here. As a realtor, and you probably work in other communities, would you have a spitball answer for Mr. or Councilmember O'Brien?
You know, I don't know that I really do. I I would I would say, you know, there's there's many comparable. Doug Finstra with the Dyna Realty. There are many comparable-sized communities. I was just visiting Chaska, visiting some parade of homes there. Chaska and 23,000 is their population, I think, in that ballpark. Outside salvage is about the same. I think that their apartment would far exceed the number of buildings and the number they and are continuing to build, so.
Does that help, Councilmember Nelson or Councilmember O'Brien?
Yeah, I I'm just I'm asking these questions because either questions are being asked, okay? And one of them is, we've got all these apartments going up. We got new apartments. How many new apartments we got going up right now? Not even counting the ones we're talking about tonight? So 700 on the waiting list, okay? Where, I mean, you got all these apartments that we're building right now. You got them, you got one, you got two downtown, correct? Two units downtown? Is that not correct? You got one by the railroad yard, you got one behind PetSmart?
No, I don't consider that downtown, but okay.
Right, are the apartments?
Yes. Preserve, in town. The preserve is.
Yeah, in town. That's what I'm talking about.
Downtown is block 25, correct?
Yes. It's in town. Okay, so you've got those. So people have asked me, they're going, do we need? And that's I'm I'm talking for the people of the city. They're asking me. I work for them, all right? So I'm asking you, do we need that many apartments? 216 plus how many more behind PetSmart plus the ones down at the railroad yard?
I would say yes.
Okay.
We have FedEx that isn't even.
You can answer that question honestly and say yes?
FedEx isn't even open yet, and they're looking to employ 200 people. You have over 7,000 people that come to this commute to this community on a daily basis. So I think that, you know, you're going to see that that's why you need this.
I think one of the things that we have to remember as a council is that, and I'm going to go down a rabbit hole here, and I probably shouldn't, but I'm gonna. We have not had, and the reason why it's feeling like we're doing a lot of apartments is that we hadn't had a multifamily housing project done in over two years in the city of Wilmer, over 10 years in the city of Wilmer. There had not been a single project. Had we been like a Alexandria or a Marshall or Hutchinson, we would have been bringing those units on slowly, and that's why we're seeing this rapid growth. I don't believe that we would have three investors, three separate investors putting apartments in Wilmer if they thought they were going to sit empty. That's just my personal opinion. You know, I I have talked with some investors, generally, a lot of your, the the rate of return on apartments is generally quite high, the expectation of your investors, and so they're not people that are going to be putting their money in projects that are going to sit empty because that's not going to turn the money around. That's my opinion, and again, it's an assumption. It's nothing more than an assumption. Councilmember Davis?
It seems like there's some feeling like we're losing money by doing TIF, sorry. And I'm just wondering how much is currently paid on that land for taxes?
Currently, the property taxes on that land is about $1,200 annually.
Okay, thank you.
That's just the property.
To answer the the prior question about how many TIF districts is collected within the city, the report for as of the year ending 2021, there were five active TIF districts, of which the JH Herzog, the existing district was the first one or was included within those five and was not yet active. 2021 total tax increment generated across all five of the TIF districts was a total $126,310. Of the five active TIF districts, the one that'll be slated next to be decertified has a statutory decertification date of 12/31/2024 is the Jennie O. TIF district. Other than that, the next one is 27, and then 34 and 35.
Now, the the property taxes that Tom that Mr. Denaway is talking about is what is the total taxes collected between the city, the school district, and the county. That's what has to go into those TIF districts. Now, at the end of those TIF districts, when they when they get decertified, and they can be decertified earlier also, when they get decertified, that total property value comes to the city, and then that total tax value comes into your general fund. So what's happening is if you stifle improvements with a TIF district, then you can expect that you're not increasing your general fund taxes in the future either. It'll stay what it is right now.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Davis?
I don't remember what was the amount that will come in when this tip is done that we would get for taxes.
Thank you, Councilmember. At the end of the proposed duration, the annual gross tax increment amount is projected to be 669,237, which is the total taxes applicable to the city, the county, and the school district. The city's tax rate is, yeah, about a third, a little more than a third of that. So I would expect about a little more than a third of that to be direct dollar impacts to the city. Maybe more importantly is the total market value of the project at the end of that duration is which is the market value that would be coming back online against which the city's levy would be spread for purposes of calculating the tax rate. The total taxable market value for the project as of the end of the district is projected to be $42,400 and or $42,4394. So that would be the new market value coming online and being added to the general fund tax base.
Thank you.
Just no comments or questions? Mr. Butterfield or Councilmember Butterfield, you said you had a two-point?
Yeah.
Question?
My ass.
And did you ask both of your point? And did you ask both of your points? Because you asked the one, and then Councilmember O'Brien asked the question, and did you get both of your?
Yep, I got both.
Okay. Additional comments or questions, council? Okay, this is a resolution approving and establishing a TIF district, Lakeland Drive Apartment Project contingent on the traffic study. Rule call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution approving the TIF agreement. Motion's been made and seconded for a resolution approving the TIF agreement. Discussion. Roll, Councilmember Nelson.
Just clarification, that's the document that was emailed to us late this afternoon, correct?
Correct.
Additional comments or questions? So as it's been amended. Rule call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have a council's approval, the City Council minutes is September 19th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes is September 26th, Central Community Transit minutes of June 28th, Park and Recreation minutes of July 20th, Convention and Visitor Bureau minutes of August 16th, Council's payable report for September 13 through September 27th, a resolution for the, from the Bureau of Justice acceptance of the 2022 Bulletproof Fest Award, a resolution advertising agreement with the Wilmer Hockey Boosters, exempt permit for Wilmer Blue Line Club, Wilmer Hockey Boosters for October 28th, an exempt permit for Wilmer Curling Club for March 11th of '23, a resolution approving the Doveri Township Fire Agreement, a resolution approving agricultural land exemption of special assessments, and an application for appointment to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission of John Kennedy.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we're to open forum, uh, and we have one individual who has signed up, Ms. Valars. Uh, you have, uh, three minutes to speak to your issue, and, uh, our city staff will have a timer, and when the timer goes off, we just ask you to complete the discussion item that you're on, not to start a new thought, and generally, the council does not respond to your request.
I don't think it'll take me three minutes, but I want to say how wonderful pavement and cement are. The residents of Second Street are very happy with all of that. Anyways, um, the other thing is, I want to, um, if anybody's on the fence about changing the parking to the east side, I was almost T-boned by a person coming through the McDonald's Extension Parking Lot as I was driving south on Second Street. I was driving slowly, they were not. Glad to be here. Um, so, that being said, the last thing I'm still curious about is if the road's going to get widened, because that's what I understand was going to happen, or is the other east side, uh, sidewalk going to be replaced? That's all I have. Again, thanks for the pavement.
You're welcome, thank you. It is on our agenda later in the, in the meeting. And now we have, uh, a public hearing, uh, for special assessments for unpaid snow and ice removal charges. I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is, um, we're to hear, uh, public comment from the individuals. Wait, may I get the wrong paper, sorry. Snow removal, here we go. Before you tonight is to hear public comment from any of the individuals that were listed on the, uh, car or council action requests that was in your packet for the unpaid snow or ice removal charges, and as we can see, there is nobody present to hear for that unless somebody else were to speak up. And we're asking for your approval to then approve these and place them on the, the taxes for collection in 2023.
Your comment is confusing to me. What was your comment? There's nobody here?
I said, none of the individuals listed on here are present here tonight unless someone's here to speak for them.
Well, I still have to hold the public hearing, right?
Correct.
I thought we were changing things. Okay, we have a public hearing, the public hearing is open, you've heard the testimony from the city clerk. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak to this issue? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the issue? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the special assessments for unpaid snow and ice removal.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we'll open the public hearing for special assessments for unpaid weed and grass mowing. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a resolution certifying the unpaid weed and grass mowing charges to the county auditor for collection in 2023, and we're here to hear testimony from any of the individuals listed on your document before you.
Public hearing is open, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the unpaid weed and grass mowing? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to council. Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the special assessments for unpaid weed and grass mowing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we'll consider the approval of the proposed 2023 budget for the Economic Development Commission. Mr. Backman, the Executive Director, thank you for being here, Aaron.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the EDC's, uh, Joint Powers Board, uh, met on July 28th and unanimously approved the proposed 2023 budget of the EDC. Uh, the Candy O. High County Board of Commissioners also approved the, uh, EDC's budget on September 6th. For the coming year, approximately 83% of the EDC's revenues are projected to come from the county tax levy. Remaining income comes from grants, loan repayments, interest, et cetera. Uh, the EDC budget for 2023 totaled $695,865. That includes a, a county tax levy of $578,000. Uh, projected expenses totaled $693,280. So once again, um, and the, the budget is a balanced budget, that's a priority for me. This is my seventh budget that I have prepared, uh, for, uh, for the EDC. Um, and, uh, I'm pleased to say that is once again, uh, balanced. The proposed, uh, total budget represents a 6.4% decrease, uh, from the current year's revenue of $743,475, which reflected some one-time state and local funding, uh, for assisting businesses, and if, if we just talked about it, but the countywide housing study that is ongoing this year. Uh, the county tax levy request has been increased by 22,000 or 3.96% over the current fiscal year, and I would be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Council? Looking for a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the request for the 2023 budget for the Economic Development Commission. Discussion. motion by Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you, Aaron, for the job you do. You've really been busy the last few years, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Aaron, I remember sitting on the interview committee when you were selected as our Economic Development, uh, Director, and the energy that you brought that day, I thought there's no way anybody can keep this energy going, and I think you surpassed the day you interviewed. Um, the work that you do for Candy High County and for the city of Wilmer, you do a yeoman's job. You are, uh, excellent employee, you do great work. Uh, I love that you bring us a balanced budget. Uh, you're very meticulous in the work you do, and even when you get put on the spot, kind of like you were today, you have an answer that is not just an assumption, but it's fact-filled. So that speaks very highly, not only of your organization, but also in the work that you do. And, uh, just to think of a few of the projects that you've really worked hard on this past year, uh, you and your office, I shouldn't say you specifically, but is the broadband issue, uh, FedEx, uh, Unique Opportunities, um, Preserve on 24th, um, Epitopics, uh, the Bolt Company, and I'll, I'll say it wrong if I say it.
Brunswick.
Um, the Bolt, uh, say it again?
Brunswick.
Brunswick. Um, you know, that was no small lift to get those guys to come here, um, and, uh, plus all the projects you've done in the county, so, uh, you do great work, and, uh, this budget reflects the, uh, excellent, um, fiduciary responsibility you take in the director's position, so. I'll stand for additional questions, or otherwise, we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the proposed 2023 budget for the Economic Development Commission, signal of a standing aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, we have a consideration of designating parking restrictions along Second Street Southeast. Mr. Vogi, our, uh...
Good evening.
...engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, in your packets this evening, I did include a memo that was essentially a summary of the, the Monday, August 22nd meeting that was held with residents along Second Street. Uh, initially, that meeting was centered around, uh, the potential of a one-way, as councils are aware, um, there was some discussion that residents preferred that it'd be a one-way. Um, through that discussion that evening, the residents that were in attendance were informally polled, um, they suggested that the street remain two-way traffic, and then in addition to that, um, they requested that no parking be allowed on Second Street. So that is before you this evening. Uh, ultimately, the project is wrapping up, pavement's down, concrete's in, uh, topsoil has been installed, and here, hopefully soon, uh, the seeding will be done this week, so that project is, is coming to a close. Um, and there were also some questions about the potential for additional sidewalk on the east side of the street that, uh, residents had inquired about at that meeting. I did explain, um, some of the ADA and pro-wag requirements associated with that sidewalk. Since that meeting, city staff has, um, discovered some previous communication from, from former city staff relative to the potential, uh, no imminent plans, but the potential for burying underground utilities on the east side of that street. And then in addition, um, to retrofit the project, which was recently completed, uh, we've provided, or we've estimated the costs associated with constructing that sidewalk to be approximately $344,000. So essentially, those are the two items before council this evening, uh, the parking restrictions, whether or not that should be no parking on the street as informally polled by the residents present, present at that meeting, and, or on one side of the street, whatever council's direction is, and then, um, any direction should council desire to pursue any sidewalk on that east side. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Ms. Valiant, should we take these as two issues?
Yes.
Should we take them at one? Okay. So the first item that I would like the council to consider is a resolution designating parking restrictions along Second Street Southeast, uh, and, uh, as an alternative, staff has listed that you could approve parking along the east side of Second Street only, um, in, uh, southeast, again, I'm talking, uh, but the recommendation of staff, uh, from the consensus of those present at the meeting, uh, was to have no parking on either side. That also was, uh, the same thing that our Public Works Director had stated at that meeting, and I don't know, uh, Mr. Manzer, if you have anything that you want to add to that, but I know you said for, uh, snow plowing, it would really help your crews if there was parking on neither side of the road there. So does that remain consistent? Okay. So what's in front of you is to approve a resolution for no parking on the west and east side of Second Street Southeast from Becker Avenue Southeast to Olina Avenue Southeast. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve parking on the east side of Second Street only.
Second. Discussion.
So what, 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 uh, what the recommended action is, is for no parking on the west and east side, so what your motion would be is that there would be no parking on the west side of Second Street Southeast?
Correct. I thought we could go for one of the alternatives if we didn't want to go for the no parking.
Oh, certainly, 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 okay. So that motion, so to approve parking along the east side of Second Street Southeast only. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Butterfield?
I, for one, will not be voting for parking on, on Second Street. This is my ward. We had a meeting, they pay great taxes on their property, they have safety concerns. I actually go up and down that street quite a bit, I have safety concerns. It's time this council starts to listen to our taxpayers. Our taxpayers on this project does not want parking, and that's the way we should move with this.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Osmus?
First, I don't feel like East Second Street is the only one that's dealing with the, the, whether it's the speed, whether it's the parking, whether it's the width of the road. If you start on Second Street, then you're going to have to continue to Third, Fourth, Fifth, all the way down. I don't know why we would make an exception just for Second Street. The other thing that could be, um, considered is some communities that say just from parking at a certain period of time at night until the morning, and then that helps for the snow removal piece, and I get that. I totally understand why Public Works would like nothing better, and I would like it for them to have a straight shot to plow, but to have no parking on the street, I was sitting next to somebody at that meeting, and I said, "Well, what are you going to do if you have a birthday party, or an anniversary party, or some kind of a gathering at your house, if nobody can park on the street?" And, um, that person just said, "We don't have parties." But, so that's why...
They don't live with you, do they?
No. So if, yeah, if, um, if we were going to go that route of no parking, then I think it has to be from a certain period of time at night until the morning, and then that's citywide then, um, because then I think there's too much confusion. Which street can you park on, which street can't you park on? Um, but I definitely feel strongly that it should be on the east side because of that traffic coming out of the businesses from First Street that carry out in, and that's where the sidewalk is, and those cars parked along the west side are blocking, uh, the view of anybody coming out of those, those areas.
Councilmember Davis, followed by Butterfield.
I didn't have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nelson?
Thank you. I'm struggling with this one, um, just from the concerns that have been there, and, and actually just driving on it on, on my way to work, I've just paid attention, and I've sat, almost every time I drive, waiting for someone to go around a parked car, um, with that. But if it's my understanding... But if it's my understanding that we have parking only on one side of the street, on multiple streets over there. So when you get to Third Street, is it the same? I think it's parking on the west side, and you don't park on the east side, if I'm correct. And so I'm just curious if we do decide to do one side only, we would have different sides on different streets versus following some sort of method for that? What I'm hearing is concerns about signage and concerns about people coming. I don't know if the signs aren't up yet, but if there's stops that come out from traffic from First Street, I think there's like five or six of them right now. How would we monitor, you know, with that? And so I'm struggling with switching from, you know, the decision. And I will also say at the meeting, the person I sat next to, I think, felt strongly that depending on which side of the street you lived on is what you wanted. And so I think to step back and to say what's in the best interest of Wilmer from a traffic standpoint. I think speed and slowing it down is just as important with the decision that we're making. It's a very narrow street. People are going to be waiting. It's going to be bad this winter with the little lift thing. They won't clean it as well for this first year. I could support no parking for the first year and see how it goes. But I'm confused with why we would look at the east side.
Councilmember Butterfield.
We currently do already have Lakeland Drive in town that's no parking. Those taxpayers lost that. Now we're probably going to be getting apartment buildings up there with more traffic. So now you're saying that we should put Lakeland Drive to parking on the streets too, to satisfy everybody in Wilmer? This is a concern for Second Street. The Second Street Task Force or open meeting we had was pretty hardcore. They want two ways and no parking. It's time the city starts listening to our taxpayers. Again, this has to be no parking.
Just a comment, Councilmember O'Brien.
I was on Second Street two days ago. There was a pickup parked on the west side. Doesn't make any difference if it's east or west. I could barely get around that pickup. I mean, that is a narrow street. Now, the Third Street, is that the same width?
Yeah.
That's the same width?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just saying, we had somebody that was coming out of their pickup, and they opened the door, and the other lane was blocked. They couldn't get around. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, if they want no parking, give them no parking. Might be a good idea, what Councilwoman Nelson said. Try it for a year, see what happens, see how it looks. I know that public service is going to like no parking, but I guess I don't know. I don't know if that's what they want. Give it a shot.
Councilmember Osk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I drive down Second Street, I see a lot of people parked there. And I'm wondering where those people are going to park if there's no parking on Second Street. And I get a lot of emails and phone calls about people who are in other parts of the town, mostly downtown, who are saying, we need more parking. I have no place to park. You know, I get that there were some people who live on Second Street who were at this meeting that said that they would like there to be no parking on the street. I imagine those are the folks with driveways who have capacity to take care of all their vehicles. But I think there's other residents on Second Street that don't. And I also think Councilwoman Osmus makes a great point about the confusion about, you know, why one street and not others. I'd be concerned about that as well.
Councilmember Davis.
And so if we let the people on Second Street decide the parking on their street, do we need to have a bunch more meetings for all the other streets to see if they want parking or not?
I think the reason we had the meeting is that council had asked that. And there were constituents along there that had spoke to their council members. And so we had a work session. At that work session, it was suggested we have that. And so we called that at the request of the council. You know, we could be opening up a Pandora's Box here, but at the same time, you know, these are the decisions councils make. You know, how do you have parking? When is parking? You know, as Councilmember Osmus stated, you know, there are a lot of cities and a lot of communities that restrict parking from probably three to four hours overnight simply to allow their public works staff to get those streets cleaned. So, you know, this is something that, you bring up an interesting idea. You know, do we have more public meetings and talk about that? I think the reason we had the Second Street from the mayor's perspective is that there were so many issues on the reconstruction of that street is why we had it. It wasn't simply around parking, but it ended up going to parking because that's kind of what happens when you have public meetings, is that you think it's going one way, and it goes to different. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. So staff's recommendation was to do the no parking. And I heard some comments made that both Public Works and were approving that. The alternate, though, is listed as the east side. I am curious with why staff would recommend that as an alternate.
I think staff probably had to, staff had to pick one side, so they picked the east.
No.
No, I don't know.
The east side was picked because the sidewalk is on the west side. So that way, then you don't block any pedestrians you can see on the west side walking. And you don't have the parked cars in the way. And then also on the west, on the east side, they don't have any sidewalks. So then they can stack their cars also. So residents of each house can stack their cars in their driveway and then allow people that are on the west side to park on the east side.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, I kind of have three points. First, if there's no parking, part of the issue that we are talking about here is safety. My feeling is, my personal opinion, if there are no cars on that street, it's a racetrack. There is nothing to slow them down. If there is a car that they at least have to slow down and be cautious of and be aware of, or somebody coming out of a car, the doors opening, that at least slows them down. They have to be aware of another vehicle in the street. Otherwise, I just think it's too wide open, and it's just going to be a drag strip. The second thing, as far as why the parking would be on the east side of this street and still be on the west side of the Third Street and Fourth Street that are the same narrow width, just because we change one, I don't think we have to change all of them. Those residents on those streets are used to where they're parked. We don't need to change the sign just because we did something to Second Street. Second Street has a unique traffic pattern, a traffic flow than Third and Fourth or any other narrow street because of those businesses that feed onto it. So it makes more sense for the parking to be on the other street. The other thing, as far as the snow removal, we, if we say no parking for the whole year, the purpose, or it seems to me like the biggest concern is for snow removal. And we have a, we have a snow emergency in place if the snow removal is an issue. And then everybody has to get off of the streets to be able to move the snow. I don't, I don't understand why we would inconvenience all of those residents to not have a place to park on the street for a couple of instances during the winter when they have to plow the street.
Councilmember Davis.
Some cities have where you can't park on the street between like November 1st and April 1st. And maybe on these, all of the narrow streets, that would be a good idea.
And we used to have that on Lakeland Drive back in the day.
I believe the current policy is, is that a snow emergency can be called by the Public Works Director and can list specific streets if the Public Works Director so chooses. Councilmember Nelson.
I do think there are signs on the east side that are prohibiting also certain timeframes that have been up there all along. But my concern with this is, we're talking about parking, but we haven't addressed the signage that needs to be done to, there were yield signs before. There should be stop signs coming from the places on, that are coming off from First Street onto Second Street, just a general awareness of the traffic. So is that something that needs to be incorporated into this motion? Or is that something that is just not done yet?
I believe what was said by our consultant engineer is that the signage wasn't put up yet. I believe that's what he said.
I wasn't sure if there were signs, stop signs in some of those locations off from First Street. I've heard concerns about traffic coming out from there on a regular basis. And so I don't know whether there were signs there or not. My concern is that if we're going to pick a side of the street to park on, that we make sure that we complete stop signs and yield signs that were there before or that were needed and were not there before.
Well, I think, in having sat in a ton of these meetings, stop signs increase accidents.
I don't, I don't agree with that, and I know that that's your thought. But I think when you're coming, I understand that. But what we have and what we agreed to when we allowed traffic from First Street to go onto Second Street was that we were going to control that. I don't think we have that now, and we have multiple ones there. And so I'm asking for that to be considered as part of this safety plan for Second Street.
Would you like to add that as an addendum?
I was asking if I needed to add that as an addendum. If I do, I will, yes.
I believe that would be appropriate if that's what you wish to do. Is that what you wish to do?
Yes, I'm, I thought you asked me, and I answered, so I'm sorry, yes.
Because you need to make that as an amendment in the form of a motion.
All right, I will make it as an amendment to make sure that there are stop signs and yield signs as were there before and are needed off from First Street.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Certainly.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand, like, it seems like Councilwoman Nelson is trying to get clarification as to is this part of the current plan? Is that, is that something Mr. Bogey could respond to?
Yeah.
So Mayor, Council, I think ultimately, the signage that existed prior to the project has not been replaced yet. So any signage that was out there prior to the project being constructed, that will be replaced as part of the project. Now, if we're talking about adding new signage that didn't exist prior to the project, that's a different thing. But any signage that was on the project prior to the initiation of construction will be replaced.
Okay. And then a follow-up question to Councilwoman Nelson. Your intent is then to replace yield signs with stop signs?
No, I was referencing that the yield signs needed to be put back up. My concern is that the traffic that comes through First Street onto Second Street, I don't know whether there were stop signs there. And I believe there should be stop signs there before they enter onto Second Street.
I hope I'm not the only one confused.
Well.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. This seems like a separate issue to me. This does not speak to the motion of whether or not we're going to have parking on the east or west side. This is a totally separate issue of signage.
And I'm just going to clarify, I said it that way to begin with, that that's a separate issue. If we're going to deal with it being on the east side, I wanted to know what the, because what I have heard from the people, from the constituents, is that there's a concern about traffic speeding. And so the signs aren't back up. I don't know which signs go back up. But if we're going to move this to the other side, I want to make sure that we have some method in place to put signs up, in particular, stop signs from the pass-throughs from First Street onto Second Street.
I still feel like it's a separate issue. If whether the parking's on the west side, the east side, or there's no parking, we're still going to need that signage. So I think we, I think it's separate.
Mr. Mayor, could we talk about parking, then sidewalk, then stop signs?
You know, we can do whatever we want. And I know better than to say, no, I don't think we should do it that way. Question. So we're going to break it into three pieces, as was suggested.
I will withdraw my amendment to the motion.
There wasn't a second. So we're going to deal with these as three separate issues. And being three separate issues, we are going to talk specifically about parking on Second Street Southeast. The motion is to.
Park on the east side.
Allow parking on the east side of Second Street only. To the question. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson? No. Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Four, four eyes, three knees.
That motion passes. Next, we're going to talk about a sidewalk on Second Street Southeast, adding the sidewalk to the east side of Second Street Southeast. You have the cut sheet that has been supplied to you, as requested at the public input session. And so that cut sheet is part of the document. Is there someone who wishes to make a motion to add the sidewalk to the east side of Second Street?
I'll make a motion to add the sidewalk to, you say, Second Street Southeast in Wilmer.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bakerly.
Jared, you said the utilities might want to bury utility lines on Second Street underground?
Yeah, Council, staff did find some correspondence between former engineering staff and Wilmer Municipal Utilities about the potential of burying the power lines underground. I know this came up very early on in the discussions about this project. Wilmer Municipal Utilities does not have any imminent intent to bury those power lines, but at some point in the future, they've indicated that they may. And the correspondence that was read between city staff and the Wilmer Municipal Utilities was that leaving sidewalk out on the east side would provide a corridor for those utilities to be buried in the future, thereby not requiring new sidewalk to be removed as part of an underground utility installation, so.
So it could be 10 years, it could be 15 years?
Right, nobody, no specific schedule at this point.
Because it's unfortunate that they didn't put sidewalks in. Because I know myself, if I was walking down to Alina to junior high or the mall, and I lived on the east side, there's no way I'm going to cross the street, go to the west side, and get down to Alina and then cross it again and get back over, so. And there's no way, well, there isn't now, because you can't put electrical underground and just keep it there. But it'd be spending to rip up all the sidewalks.
Councilmember Butterfield, followed by Osmus.
Again, this is a safety concern. Now we got parking on the east side of the street, no place for them to walk. Before, you know, we would have had no parking. They could have walked down the shoulder on the east side, going up and down. There's a lot of mean dogs down that street. And there's a lot of people that have, you wear a dog on there. And there's a lot of people that have, you wear a dog on there. Personally, like I said, I go up and down Second Street quite a bit. And it's, it's not going to be safe for anybody going now having a walk in the street versus, uh, you know, if they want to stay on the east side. Most people are going to be switching over to the west side now. But that sidewalk needs to be replaced now if we're going to have parking on the east side. So people can come and go easily with, uh, being safely walking up and down Second Street.
Okay, may you vote? Councilmember Osmus, followed by Fagerly.
Okay, so you're saying there is room for a sidewalk right now? It would be narrow. narrower than the one on the...
Yeah, Mayor, Council, the ultimate issue that we're going to run into with the sidewalk on the east side is meeting ADA while accommodating reasonable driveway slopes with residents. I do have significant concerns that we put a sidewalk in on that side and those driveways get significantly steep. And trailer hitches and bumpers will be dragging, and those will be the calls that we'll be receiving. Um, I've seen it happen before, and this is not unique, and it would definitely happen here. So I would just put that out there, but if it is a desire of Council to install a sidewalk on the east side, we can certainly accommodate that. As I indicated in my opening remarks, we've estimated that cost to be approximately $344,000.
So, okay, so that was, the other part of my question was, if there was room, where were we going to come up with the $344,000? Just, I, I would also like to say that I feel there's, from everything that they've had to go through on East Second Street, there's a part of me that was like, what can we do to make their life better? Because they had a tough two summers to have to live there. And, and so if the sidewalk is something they would want, that would be something we would be able to provide. But I did think that there was, I didn't think it was even going to be physically possible because of some of the things you mentioned. And also the retaining walls and the, right next to the people, the, up at the property and those driveways, that it, you can't physically do it. Without some issues.
That's perfect, Fagerly.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Typically, we assess for sidewalks. Would the city pay for it, or would we assess them? Anyone?
It's a council decision. I think it's something that should be addressed after the first of the year. Councilmember Ask?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were there other reasons why the sidewalk wasn't part of the original plan? I'm assuming based on the conversation that you've already had with us tonight, that, that that was the, the majority of the reason? Are there other reasons why this wasn't included?
So the documentation that we found was relative to the utility corridor. I can tell you that after reviewing that corridor and the existing driveway slopes along that side, I also believe that impacted the decision to remove the sidewalk from the east side to meet ADA and pro-ag requirements and the impact that would have to the, the residents' driveways. So that's just my opinion. I haven't found any documentation specific to that. But that is my assumption.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to install sidewalks on the east side of Second Street Southeast. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
No.
Osmus?
No.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
No.
Davis?
No.
Uh, Nelson?
No.
Two eyes, five no, knees.
That, that motion fails. Next, we have consideration of signage. I don't imagine you have the cut sheets here, because you didn't know this was going to come up, I'm sure. And I know that generally we follow the Uniform Traffic Book, the Bible. But what you said is that you are going to replace the stop signs and yield signs that were there before, correct? Okay, Council, what are your wishes to do here? Go ahead.
Can we address this in two weeks after he's had a chance to determine what was there and what could be put in place? This, I mean, this doesn't have to get decided tonight, correct?
I mean, the Council can do what they wish, yes.
Okay, this is a thought.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just seeking clarification. I believe the yield signs were there before. That is where the street and would follow what the mayor said of us needing to follow a certain protocol. Is that correct? If I remember right, there were two yield signs, one at Alina and one at Minnesota?
Um, I don't know that us top, we, we can put together the, the signage plan, if you will, that where, what signs will be where. I was under the impression that you're referring to the businesses that access Second Street from...
I was referring to both, because I've been asked that the signs, are they going to be put up back up that were there before with the yield signs? And concerns about Minnesota and Alina for sure, and I forget what the other one is in between. Augusta. But my assumption is that the entrances from the businesses on First Street would be a different type of signage that we could require versus on the street, so that they have to stop to enter the street.
Chief Elt, if a stop sign is, is placed on a private business, generally those internal signages are not enforceable, correct?
The exception would be as if they go onto a public street, then, like, there used to be one coming from Walmart Lot onto 19th Avenue. That would be enforceable, but if it's within the private property, like the stop signs that are in front of Cashwise, Cub Foods, Candy Mall or something, those are not enforceable by us.
Okay. So to Council Nelson's point, then if the, if the Council so ordered or directed staff to put those stop signs up, those would be enforceable?
Correct, if they let onto Second Street, yes, they would be enforceable.
I'm fine bringing it back in two weeks, but I'm, I, I do believe we've got some access onto Second Street that is different than they were before or more than what, what we were probably even aware of. So that'll be my request in two weeks to do that. But what, what we can do for yield signs and what we can do on the street, I'm understand, I understand that, those requirements.
Are we ready to move to the next item? Staff, you understand what we're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we are moving on to consider approval of a change order number one for the project number 2204 Fire Station. Mr. Vogi?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Enclosed in your packets this evening is a change order for the construction of additional bituminous and concrete surfaces at the south side of the fire hall facility. During construction, Fire Chief Hanson and staff met. There was a grass boulevard on the south side of that parking lot. It was discussed in terms of maintenance, whether that be grass mowing and parking lot circulation, that that area be expanded into bituminous, which is certainly an opportunity as the, as the contractors on site. In addition to that, during construction, staff was approached by the property owner to the east. The Schreugman Cleaner area, they indicated that they were interested in having some sidewalk replaced to correct a drainage issue as part of the project. And so they've approached, they approached staff about getting that incorporated into the work. Obviously, neither of these items were, were contemplated as part of the original project. Uh, so estimates were provided by the contractors, and those have been enclosed in your packet this evening. One item to note is that the sidewalk on the neighboring property is proposed to be paid for 100% by that neighboring property owner. So the budgetary breakdown is in your, is in the car form before you this, this evening. And overall, with the addition of change order number one and the amount of $31,843.80, the overall project is still within the total project budget previously approved of $554,865. So with that, Mayor, Council, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Also, what are your wishes?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve change order number one for project number 2204. Discussion. I have a question. How many parking spots are being added by this change order?
Don't know that I have the parking spots listed on here, to be honest with you. So the, the boulevard area that previously existed is what we're talking about, filling in with con, or with bituminous. I don't know that we did a specific count on the number of additional parking spots, but we could certainly put something together for you if, if that's desired.
I'm just wondering why we're spending the money if we're not gaining parking spots? I mean, are we spending the money just because we're under the contingency? So we just need to make sure we spend all the money? Is that, is that the goal here?
No, I don't think that was the intent, the intent at all from, from conversations with Fire Chief. The, the boulevard area there is ultimately grass now. So they viewed it as a circulation and a maintenance item, meaning grass isn't going to have to be mowed in that, in that area. And it provides more opportunity for the maneuvering of the vehicles that use that south side. Definitely not related to the contingency.
Well, I happened to work there for a few years, so I, I know exactly what we're talking about here. Doesn't seem necessary at all to me. It's Council's choice. Additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Do we have any concern about moving green space and just making it all impervious?
In terms of the, of this project and the, the amount of green space that's going to be removed, that, the, the way the parking lot drains right now, majority of that runs actually out the, out the driveway and one of the drainage issues. So the, the impur, or the grass isn't exceeding any thresholds that we're subject to. So, I mean, ultimately, certainly if, uh, you know, we, we want softscapes in our, in our areas, but this isn't exceeding any threshold. So certainly, we, Council definitely, like the mayor indicated, doesn't have to approve the change order, but in this particular case, I'm not concerned with the amount of green space that's being removed.
Not even aesthetically?
You know, I'm just going to say, when, when this, when this, when this parking lot was designed in the seventies, there was a reason they put that in there. And it's been there since then. And the reason I asked the question is I thought maybe they were going to do something with, you know, go doing diagonal parking there instead of straight-in parking or, you know, and that, then it makes sense, because then you're going to get additional vehicles in there. That makes sense, but just to take it out, I mean, I have that same concern. I mean, we're doing so much downtown and making so much impervious. You know, now, I mean, I, I, I should keep my mouth shut, I guess. It's just, it's frustrating. Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
No.
Butterfield?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Ask?
No.
Davis?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
No.
One eye, six knees.
That resolution fails. Next, a consideration of an ordinance and call for public hearing to amend Chapter Nine nuisances and Chapter Seventeen surface water management to update city code and MS4 requirements. Again, Jared?
Evening, Mayor, Council. I don't usually do this, but I would like to make one clarification on the last action I was just taking by Council. We can certainly leave that green space in, but I guess, can we fix the drainage issue with the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Oh, oh, no, no, hold on, hold on, that's going to take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
The motion is to fix the drainage issue by Schreugman's cleaners and being paid for 100% by Schreugman's cleaners.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Aye.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien? Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Seven eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration, next is consideration of ordinance and call for public hearing to amend Chapter Nine nuisances and Chapter Seventeen surface water management to update city code and MS4 requirements. Mr. Vogi?
Mayor, Council, this item is related to the city's MS4 or municipal separate storm sewer system requirements. And the city is a member of the MS4 because of the city's population and, and a few other things. This is the same program that you have the open, or the public hearing usually around June every year and review the, the actions throughout this program. Ultimately, the reason it's before you this evening is because the MPCA or Minnesota Pollution Control Agency updated their MS4 requirements. And these modifications that are proposed are simply to come into compliance with the new permit and ultimately, which is a requirement of the MPCA. So I think it was summarized for you. Essentially, Chapter Nine, there's an additional nuisance that's required as it relates to pet, pet waste by the MPCA. Chapter Seventeen, modification of some definitions that were in the previous ordinance. And then some best management practices as they relate to water quality criteria. And then discussion related to illicit discharges, specifically the storage of salt used in the winter. There's some specific requirements about how that must be stored to help with the overall reduction of chlorides within the, the environment is ultimately what the MPC is driving towards with that requirement. So with that, I'll answer any questions. The, the resolution that was included in your pack, or the, the ordinances that were included in your packet included the strike-through language with the replaced language. So that's exactly what's being changed. It's housekeeping essentially is what's really happening here this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set the public hearing for October 17th, 2022. Discussion. Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have a, I'm looking for a motion to publish the notice by summary.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the notice by summary. This takes six votes from the Council. Discussion. Hold in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Seven eyes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of an, introduction of an ordinance to call for public hearing to rezon Skylark Properties. Ms. Valiant?
Thank you.
Again, this is, this will be a motion to set the public hearing for October 17th.
Correct. Yes, so this introduction tonight is for the ordinance and to call for the public hearing on October 17th for the rezoning of the Skylark Properties from shopping center to general business district. The planning commission approved this recommendation September 21st, and staff has received the request from Skylark Properties to, to rezone that into a general business district. Is there any questions I can answer?
Councilmember Butterfield?
Which way would be more of a higher tax base?
It, this is only rezoning, so it doesn't have anything to do with the tax base. The tax base is based on commercial.
From agriculture R five, this is, we'll leave it flat.
Because it's a commercial property.
Okay. So, I'll look for a motion for that. So.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for October 17th to hear, um, Skylark Properties, uh, rezone. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Just a question. I know we talked about this earlier, but the, um, issues with the parking lot, the maintenance of the parking lot, et cetera, will that be coming back to us, um, as it relates to rezoning this with kind of the piecemealing of the properties?
As properties are developed and there, if there's a developer's agreement, that can be put in there. But as far as this, that has nothing to do with any of the redoing of the parking lot.
We're, we're separating it from a, aren't we separating it from a shopping center into separate parcels?
Correct. And well, there, there's no parcel breakup yet. This would just allow them to do that without having to come every time to split a parcel.
Okay.
And you wouldn't, every time, what this actually does, it allows it to be split under a general business district, and they don't have to come and rezone each new business district. They would only have to have the approval of splitting the parcels. Does that make sense?
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next.
For summary on that one, too?
I don't, do we have summary on that one as well?
No.
No, it's only a short.
It's only one page.
Okay. Next, we have summary of conclusions of evaluation of performance of City Administrator, uh, Valiant. Mr. Scott.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe, actually, this is one you have the summary before you, or at least hopefully you do. And you can just proceed to read the conclusions that were agreed to at the performance evaluation at the conclusion of the previous council meeting.
They had on my note, I was supposed to call on you, so I thought maybe you had a surprise for me.
Nope.
Okay. On September 19th, 2022, the City Council held enclosed meeting to evaluate the performance of City Administrator Leslie Valiant. In accordance with governing law at this council meeting, which is the next possible open council meeting following the previously mentioned closed meeting, the City Council is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation reached by the council at the September 19th, 2022 closed meeting. City Administrator Valiant did not request that such meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of City Administrator Valiant's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. The conclusions. As chairperson of this meeting, I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the council from the September 19th, 2022 evaluation. Number one, City Administrator Valiant was evaluated on numerous aspects of her performance and has in every instance met and often exceeded expectations. Number two, City Administrator Valiant is providing strong leadership and building a strong positive culture throughout the city organization. Number three, City Administrator Valiant is making important progress on upgrading city technology to improve efficiencies of operations. Number four, City Administrator Valiant has been responsive to and is building strong relationships with the City Council. Number five, the mayor and city council are grateful to have Leslie in this position and thank Leslie for her hard work on behalf of the city. Number six, a salary increase is warranted based on City Administrator Valiant's performance evaluation. I would entertain a, no, I don't take a motion for that, do I?
Nope.
That report. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. The next item, uh, agenda item is a consideration of a salary increase for City Administrator Leslie Valiant. Members, I will entertain a motion to, entertain a motion of the following, that the performance of City Administrator Valiant is satisfactory and that City Administrator's salary shall be increased to $160,000 annually, effective and retro, retroactively back to June 1st of 2022. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Leslie, thank you for the work that you, that you're doing for the city, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, many great years of, uh, of, of you staying with us here. So we're glad you're here.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the support that the council and staff provides me every day.
Thank you. Next, we have community pride announcements. Any announcements from the council?
Yes. Yes. Judy Haseman?
Ms. Thompson?
I would just like to remind the members of the public that the city auction is coming up on Wednesday, October 5th. It begins at 10:00 a.m. and it's out at the Public Works Garage.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, Demo is having their fundraising auction at the Womer, uh, Education and Arts Center, Sunday, October 16th at 1:00 p.m. They have another, a number of items that they have available, and they also have a raffle. Uh, and I'm sure you can contact any of their members, uh, to get, uh, a copy or to buy raffle tickets. Uh, they're a dollar apiece. Also, just a reminder to the council, we have a meeting next Tuesday as well, a continuation of the public, or of the discussion in regards to assessments. And that will be at 5:30 downstairs in the room, uh, where we had our last meeting in regards to assessments. Councilmember Osmus?
It is Public Utilities Week, isn't it?
Don't know.
Okay. I didn't know if anybody knew. I know at one time they used to have an event, but I haven't seen or heard anything about it, so I was just wondering if anybody knew anything. COVID, yes, it's COVID, yeah.
I have one pride issue. Uh, our people from the Public's, uh, Public Utilities MPU went down to Florida and worked very hard down there. And I think they're still there, as a matter of fact. So kudos to them.
Okay. Cool, cool. Anything else? Okay, um, the next item, uh, city will be going into closed session. At the conclusion of closed session, uh, council will take no action other than to adjourn. Uh, so you will, uh, so this will, there will be no action taken at the conclusion of this meeting. Uh, so at this time, if you are not, uh, part of this meeting, uh, we would ask you to, to leave. Uh, I will read the, um, the appropriate statute. The next item, the next agenda item is labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota State Statute, Section 13D, point 03, sub 1, clause B. A portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to such statute upon a duly approved motion from the City Council. I will now entertain a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. We are in closed session.